Meeting to order. This is February 5, 2020. I'd like to bring the meeting to order at 6:35 PM. Nashville High School North Boardroom. It's the Nashville Board of Education. Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Ziem. Ms. Ziem is not with us tonight. Also with us, we have Dr. Mosley. We have Mr. Donovan.
Here.
And we have one item on the agenda, and that's the presentation from administration. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mosley.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening to all. This is our FY '21 budget, and it's going to look a little different this year than it did last year. I'll talk a little bit about what that looks like. We used the strategic plan to actually outline some of our initiatives to the public. We could spend -- it's hard. The hardest part about this process is to prioritize necessities and needs in the district. And Dan Donovan and I are going to work together on this. It's like a tag team. I'll start, and then Dan will jump in, and then I'll jump back in. At the end of the presentation, we'll take some questions or comments or whatever the board shall choose. We're excited about this process and how we came about, and certainly these are budget recommendations from my administrative team to the board. All right. You ready? Okay. So when I said we did things a little different this year, what we did this year is that we took all of our -- we took our requests and recommendations, and we aligned them to the strategic plan. So the first one says, and I -- when I -- when we use PowerPoint, I like to talk around the slides and not read from the slides. So for the public and for the board, we don't -- I can read verbatim, but I just think it's helpful to talk in general. So part of what we did is that our budget alignment or priorities consisted of providing special education services to our students with special needs. We've talked extensively about our ELL students and their support, increasing kindergarten para-educators for our kindergarten program, attract and retain highly qualified educators, and maintaining our current teaching force and staff. And thank you. Thank you. You're up, Dan.
All right. So we start off the budget process each year. We have to sort of define what the base was from last year. So this is the budget year that we're in now, fiscal year '20. We're dealing with a budget that was approved by the Board of Education of $112,082,000. Now, I always show this slide because it -- if you take a look at the city budget book, you'll see that the budget for the school is $150 million, not $112,000 that this board approves. And the difference of those two items there, the large item, the $39 million, which is all the benefits, FICA and pension, those are costs associated with our employees, so they're costs associated with the school, but they're allocated to us by the city. Okay? So when we go through this process, that will happen later. That number you don't approve, that number is assigned to us. And then what the city also does, if there's a union contract where we don't have a contract in place at the time, we put a reserve aside. They take those amounts, and they put them on their balance sheet. So basically, the -- you could look at the budget, the budget approved by the BOE, $112 million. The budget approved in the city book is close to $151 million. The budget that we're presenting tonight is $115,231,000. That's 3.3 million, 149, or 2.81 percent above what last year was. And keep in mind, that percent is based upon the $112 million, not the $150 million. Okay. So typically, what I do is I break out that total by what's -- we consider salary versus non-salary or non-labor costs. So as you can see, of the $112 million on the budget we're in now, $88 million of that is labor. So typically, it's around 80 percent of our costs is labor. That would be higher if you put the benefits in, but just on the $112 million, 80 percent of that is labor. So obviously, that's our highest cost. So that number in the proposed budget is moving from $88,300 to $90,248. That's an increase of $1,864, or 2.11 percent. Just to -- this sort of gives you a little bit of a breakdown of -- we have many different labor accounts, but if you take a look at the wages, full-time, part-time, and we add in any allowance with salary increases, that's basically -- that's $1.9 million. Okay? All the other labor accounts, things like longevity, stipends, overtime, attrition, additional hours, that in this year's budget is actually $100,000 less than it was last year. So that just gives you a little sense of where we are with the labor. Okay. The non-labor increase, which is about 20 percent of the budget. Last year was $23,600. I mean, last year meaning the year we're in now. The proposed budget, it's almost $25 million. That's an increase of 1.2. Now, you see there, it's a 5.42 percent increase, but it's 5.42 of only 20 percent of the budget is going up, 5.42. 80 percent is going only 2.11, which gives you the net of the 2.81 for the total budget. In your budget book, which we can run through later if you'd like, there's one of the -- one of the budget -- it's a two-page. It's a commodity budget, we call it. This is showing some of the non-labor costs that have gone up significantly in this budget versus last budget. The first item is transportation. We are entering a new contract, and we can get -- we'll get into more details at the Finance and Ops Committee next week. We had a five-year contract. We did a one-year addendum, and now we're going to be proposing a new contract, which, as I said, we'll discuss next week. That will have a significant increase in the first week, the first year, excuse me. So that number, the total transportation cost increase is $422,000. About 410 of that is due to the new contract. It is higher than the last couple of years. The last couple of years, the contract increase was about half that. And like I said, we'll get into more of the details when we speak to the contract. The second line, pupil support services. These are our costs associated with our special education program. Basically, that $28,000 is made up of two services where the contracts went up. One of them is -- well, one of them is the occupational and physical therapy line. That's up $20,000. And the other is $8,000 increase due to a contract with the provider who -- for our students that have hard-of-hearing, they wear these units, and the cost of those units as well as the maintenance on those units went up significantly, $8,000. That's what that is. The next, the contracted services, is up about $112,000. $30,000 is an item, a new item, which we'll talk about a little later in this discussion. $23,000 are increases from the Plan Operations Department. One of those is an item that we have to do every third year. So it's a contract that every third year, we have to pay about $12,000 a year. So that's what part of the Plan Ops increase. The other Plan Ops increases are contracts where we sign three-year deals, mostly for HVAC equipment, and they go up each of the three years. The next one, and the other item, about $40,000, is really -- it's an increase in that line. It's not really an increase in the budget. Some of you may know, one of our summer school programs is called Power Scholars, and it's run by the Y. So we used to budget this -- this used to -- we used to run this program ourselves internally, so the costs were in labor. But now, since the Y runs the program, they're really contracted services now because we pay the Y, and the Y then hires the people and runs the program. So it's more of a transfer. The next line, copier maintenance. That has been going up because we've simply been using our copiers more. We have a agreement with a vendor. We pay less than a third of a cent per copy for a black copy, so the price itself is fine. But we manage it from a central point of view, so each school pretty much can copy. It's not part of the school budget. There's been discussions about moving it back and forth over time, but at this point, it's still sort of at the corporate level, let's call it. So that's simply gone up because people have been copying more. We're working to make people aware, to see if that number can go down, but basically, it -- based on last year's spend, we had to increase it in the budget this year. Okay. The next one is telephone voice. If you've been around the district, like a few of the board members, we put in a new phone system citywide a couple of years ago. We expected the cost of our phone to go down. It never really did go down. We budgeted it as if it would go down, and it didn't. So I budgeted this year basically what we spent last year. There is -- we've had a lot of turnover in our IT department at the top, so we're going to work with IT over the next few months and see if we can do something to bring some of those costs down. But at this point, I budgeted what we spent last year. Next line, computer software. It's about $13,000 increase. That is mostly simply existing computer software products that we have where the cost is going up. There's two or three that are going up more than others, but each one seems to be going up a little bit. That's just the nature of that business. And then miscellaneous equipment. That is part of that. About $30,000 of that difference is athletics where we -- it's once again a transfer. It's not a different in the total athletic budget. They used to budget a lot of their -- their equipment purchases were being budgeted to repairs and maintenance. So we corrected that error in the accounting part, and then we shifted over the budget. And the other, probably about $20,000 or so, is simply schools budgeting more in that line. The way we do the budget with the schools is we give each school an allocation. It's as high as $200,000 for a high school. It's maybe as low as $28,000 at one of the smaller elementary schools. We give them those dollars. They then budget them. So they may budget them different from one year to another. They may be in computer equipment one year. They may move it to miscellaneous the next. So that's what most of that other difference is. And then reductions. Wish I had more of them, but there's only a couple of reductions that sort of reach this level. The first one is other contracted services, and that was a district-wide account where, for the last two years, we didn't spend those funds. So it was money that was sitting in a district-wide account that wasn't spent, so I took a look and said, well, there's no sense to budget this line item if they're not spending out of it. We can use that money in other ways. So that's what the most of that $20,000 is. And the medical supplies is down $14,000. Last year, we had a one-time purchase of about $22,000 to purchase tourniquets to put in all the schools because we had gone through a safety training with the police force. So we're not buying all those again this year. It's not down by $22,000 because we did put some money in for our AEDs. Each one of our schools has at least one AED. They're getting a little long in the tooth. They need batteries, so we're going through a whole process with that. So we increased -- we took some of that $22,000 and put it back. So now, we're going to start speaking. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mosley in a minute, but we're going to start talking about what the new things in the budget are. As I mentioned earlier, the transportation contract increase. Typically, had the contract been signed, I would have put it in earlier and just said so, but like I said, we're still working on wrapping up the contract. So that's a significant one-time cost, well, initial cost this year in the first contract.
So what we are proposing for new costs for non-labor, if you recall in our strategic plan, that we wanted to improve services and experiences for our ELL students. Also, too, through our OCR report, we anticipate that there's going to be some constructive feedback on increasing our interpretation or interpreter services to all of our students. So that's why we proposed augmenting this person's salary or participation within the district to $30,000. So a lot -- all of these items, again, are a part of our strategic plan, and I'll talk a little bit about that. We were very fortunate this year to add four teachers, four more ELL teachers district-wide. The mayor was very supportive in putting some contingency funds away for us to do that, as well as support our budget, to do that as we start to address our ELL services. We also started full-day kindergarten about two years ago, and what we were not able to do in previous budgets is to go out and spend or secure eight para-professionals for our full-day kindergartens. What we had to do was phase them in. So this is the last of phasing in our para-professionals for our full-day kindergarten. And essentially, district-wide, that looks like .5 or half-time para-professionals in all of our para-educators, excuse me, in our kindergarten classrooms, a sign language interpreter. We need that for our special education students. As Dan mentioned, some of the equipment we're using for our students who are hard-of-hearing and deaf. School psychologists, that was a big bone of contention and a driver in our strategic plan in making sure that some of our kids who suffer from trauma, social-emotional needs, and also our teachers having that resource in the schools to support them as well. Speech and language pathologists, we need those for our special education students. And what I would say, building an in-house program for our students to really start to address our out-of-district cost. We have to slowly build our programs, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the next slides. But again, we don't have a choice. And I say we don't have a choice because we're going to pay for it anyways. We either put it in our budget, or we contract it out. So these are the things that we're looking at. Now, this is a very interesting slide, and I just want to take a moment to just kind of give the board and the public some perspective on this, these two additional programs. The strategic plan was very, very helpful for the administrative team in terms of looking at our intensive needs program from what I call the $50,000 view down in the district. And so what we discovered, just looking at this, for our project achievement classes, we have four classes at Broad Street and two classes at Birch Hill, which gives us a total of six. In our middle school, we only had one classroom. At our high school, we have the extension of the PA New Directions Program, which is one class. And so we quickly realized, we have six classes at the elementary school and one class at the middle school. Where do the kids go? So when we hear that feedback around discipline, behavior, these kids are just pushed back into the mainstream without that support. So two of two lenses here. Number one, if we don't address the kids' needs, then we're looking potentially at an out-of-district placement. Number two, we have to start to develop programs for these kids to get the support they need once they start to transition from elementary to middle school. And right now, we're lacking that. And it's no one's fault. I'm just sharing that we're -- we could do a better job with bridging that gap. And so we're starting to build our programs at the middle school level, again, to start to address the out-of-district costs for some of our kids, but also to keep our kids here in the neighboring school, but also to support students who transition from these programs, from the elementary school to the middle schools. Sure.
Sorry. I don't want to interrupt your cadence, but I've been SP and FTE, and I'm staring at it, and I'm -- FTE is full-time.
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan.
See, down below, it says 5. -- see.
Oh, I see the footnote.
It's a cheat. I just figured, rather than flipping through it.
That's very helpful, now that I know what it is. I was trying to figure out how it went from 5.2 to like one full-time employee, and I -- that makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. That's all good. That's all good. Okay. No, I'm glad. Again, we've been working on this, so we just assumed everyone. But if you look -- I'm sorry. I should have explained that. So if you look down, see this next slide here? It says personnel, administrative, SP, FT in amount. So the down below says SP, and you look at 2.5, and you look down at the below, there's a little cheat sheet that says, add an assistant principal at each secondary school. That's part of the strategic plan, so you don't have to keep flipping through it. Does that work?
Thank you so much. That's wonderful. It saves us a lot of time.
Yeah. It's good. All right. So right now, what we're proposing for this year's budget, and this is not a surprise, but we want to make sure that all of our elementary schools have an assistant principal full-time, which has been very, very helpful. In the strategic plan, what we called for was to have or to add an additional assistant principal to all of the secondary schools. That was what we were anticipating and hoping. Now, what Dan mentioned earlier, the bus contracts came up, and that's $410,000. So we weren't anticipating that. That's a 6 percent increase-ish, right? So something's got to give here. We can't have it all, so to speak. So the compromise, we thought, that to start to phase this in was to add a middle school assistant principal to all of the middle schools. I also thought it was important that the board to know that, given that there isn't a lot of support for those students transitioning from our project achievement programs from our elementary school to our middle school, I thought that the support was the critical support for our kids really best rest in the middle school. Assistant Superintendent for Recruitment and Development and Wellness, that person, we talked about that in our strategic plan around teacher recruitment, talked some support around HR, Title IX, making sure that there's some support around certification. This person would come on board and really be instrumental in helping to alleviate some of the HR responsibilities that are currently existing. Communication Director for this year. Part of what we're faced here is that communication in this district is like a -- call it like a -- not a monster, but just an entity that we have to keep feeding. And if you don't feed that communication furnace, is a better word, how about that, furnace, then something else will. And we have a great deal of initiatives happening and going on in our district right now. For example, I was over at Penachuk, and I got a plethora of questions around the new building. How is this going to -- and not just the new building, but it was a new building for them and how it was going to affect them. It was very different from fairgrounds, and it's very different from the kids at Elm Street. And so there is communication that is, and no offense, but I think we could, you know, get it going a little bit more than what we are currently doing. And we've had some community forums. We've had some meetings here. We have to think about a structure and system that we can keep feeding that furnace of communication. We also have some initiatives around student enrollment and what that feels like district-wide for our kids who are going to be transitioning to their middle school. We also have -- we're in the world now where no one's reading emails. Everyone's reading some form of text, some type of short communication. And I've always said it takes 14 hours before the message gets out there, whether you like it or not. And certainly, in a district this size, we have to really think about feeding that furnace of communication more frequently than what we are doing right now. It's not an offense of anybody out there, not Stacy, not Dan, or anyone out there, but there has to be a better and more timely way of communicating. We currently have a i-newsletter that goes out once a week. To be honest with you, there's so much stuff going on. I really think that there needs to be two forms of communication. Once at the beginning of the recite, this is coming up this week, do be prepared. And this is kind of like a weekend where, okay, this is what you -- this is what we covered this week, and that's what's going to happen next week. Some thoughts to think about as we communicate. It's a different world now. You know, we're in the era of Facebook. We're in the era of Twitter. We're in the era of social media, and communication is not done through paper. It's done with a click of a button, or, in this case, you know, on a small computer. So this is the hardest part about doing this because, to be honest with you, I think we're at an increase of about 2.81 percent. But these are items that did not make the cut for our budget, but we thought it was important to mention to the board some of the things that we're thinking about. Again, talking -- is that you? That's not me. Okay. Some of the things that we were thinking about, we have instrumental music programs that are out there that we want kids to be able to take music and have music instruction. At the same time, our facilitators of music, they seem to be running over their time, and it's no one's fault. I think they really enjoy their time with the kids, but at the same time, there's a compensation piece that needs to be addressed. Our middle school alternative program, again, as we talked a little bit about, providing support for our kids at the middle school. This program is different than the program that I mentioned before. These are kids who are not identified, but they're at risk of being identified. And this is what I would say, a proactive approach to not necessarily like that safeguard to prevent them from being identified. This program is not new to our environment. It used to exist, but unfortunately, it was discontinued for reasons that, you know, I'm quite not sure. But I would say that we have the kids to fulfill this pro -- to fill the seats in this program. Director of ELL. And I want to reiterate to the public, to the board, this has nothing to do with Bob Choper. He's a great guy. He does a wonderful job. Just to recap, Bob Choper is director of ELL, the director of Student Services, the supervisor of nurses. He's also the director of Homeless and Liaison Coordinator District-wide, and my brother's keeper. He also serves on as our point person for that. What else is he's -- did I cover it all? Okay. So, those are five hats that Bob is juggling all at once. He's a wonderful guy, but I can assure you that he would agree that he'd like to take off one of those hats, and we really feel that definitely the ELL component would be the first hat he should take off. It's also something that I can, I will anticipate and can anticipate when we get the feedback from the Office of Civil Rights, then I think that we will definitely get that recommendation. I think the hallmark of a student doing well in school is actually student engagement. And at our middle schools, we have just one team. And so, it would be helpful for our kids who don't necessarily qualify to make that upper echelon of the team in a sport, to have a B-team, and so that they can stay engaged and connected to our schools. So, that's another proposal that we have. Software, MyFlexShare. Do you want to speak to that, Dan?
Sure. That's a software that the high schools are looking to put in place. It would be a new software. So, it didn't quite make the final cut. If they really, really need it, they do have budgets at the school level. So, that was something that slipped off the number-one priority list. And the last one is school radios/batteries. About seven years ago, if you walked through all of our elementary and middle schools, you would have seen a different radio at almost every different school. Some schools had three or four different radios. Communication was extremely poor. So, we went through and purchased radios for all the schools, so each school has four to five radios, how many they really need. But as I said, that was seven years ago. We're starting to need batteries, we're starting to need a few new radios. So, we had originally put in the budget about 2,500 for that, just a little placeholder. So, that's what that line is about.
Do you want to do -- you can do that. I'll do the last one.
Okay. And this is just a summary of what we just went through, sort of what the increasing the same level of service. That's the bus contract, the nonlabor, and each, that's just a summary. So, the total of the new items is 1.416 million.
And finally, we just thought that it would just be helpful as the board, as we start to move into the budget process. I use the word "the number," and the number is really the increase that we're looking to propose, but it's also the number we get from the city. And so, this is like a five-year overview of the number that was proposed by the administrators and the number that came down from the city. So, it just gives a kind of an overview and some consistencies and some food for thought as we start to engage in the budget process and we start to prioritize our conversations and to deliberate on what we want to finally vote on and send to the city for consideration. Thank you.
Okay. So, this is the last slide, and I just, for a lot of the new people, just speak to sort of what it takes to fund schools. The budget and most of the data you're going to be receiving about is the operating budget over the next few weeks. That's what you're going to approve to move forward to the next level, where it goes to the mayor and the Board of Alderman. So, these numbers were last year's numbers, or where we are now. So, that was 112 million. That's part of it. As we talked earlier, the benefits, that was 39 million. So, that's about 150 million, the operating budget. We also have grants, okay? The grants at the last DOE, I got that number from the last DOE report, was 13.8 million. Now, there's multiple kinds of grants. The largest ones are the Title I grant, the IDEA grant, which is to be spent on special ed needs, and then the Food Service Grant. They're about $3 million each, approximately. And then, we have other grants, Title II, Title III, Title IV, all these. They're federal government grants, where the state manages the process. Those grants are not on the same cycle as our budget. So, a lot of times, those grants, you don't find out what the dollar value is until the summer, well after you've already approved these budgets. So, it's kind of a two-step process. We will show you and go over during this budget process some of the grants, but like IDA and Title I, for example, they have staff that are charged to those grants. So, some of our grants are actually paid for by those grants. If for some reason those grants would have disappeared, then that would significantly affect things. That's probably not going to happen, though they do sometimes go up and down. Title I, one year might be 3 million, they might drop it down to 2.5 million the next year. We don't know those amounts typically until the summer.
Can I just speak to that real quick? So, part of what I just want to, just for the new members, just to just give you a kind of the context, we don't know how much money the Title I grant is going to be from year to year, but it doesn't really fluctuate that much. But understand that when we may make reductions or layoff nine teachers connected to the Title I grant, we're only doing that because their employment is contingent on the grant. And it's understood that once it's renewed, then we would hire those individuals back. But also, we can't carry them over, because according to the contract, we have to notify teachers in a timely manner. I forget the date, Adam can probably tell you the date. But if we don't do it by a certain date, then we have to retain those teachers, and that could potentially come out of our operating budget. Now, you know, I don't want to jinx it too much, but our Title I grants have increased slightly each year, which has been a real benefit. Understanding depending on the teacher, the teacher's years of experience and what they bring to the employment, that also factors in as well. For example, if we have, I'm just making up a number, eight veteran teachers with 25 years of experience, they're going to be on the higher end, so it's unlikely that we can hire back all nine teachers. It might be seven. Conversely, if we have nine first-year or second-year teachers that we hire, we might be able to hire 10 or 11 of them because of the way that the pay works out. Teachers at the top of this, I say the top, but actually, it's like at the bottom and to the right, I call it. When they're down to the right, I call it, then they command a higher salary, whereas teachers up and to the left, actually, command less of a salary. Good?
I'm good. Okay. So, another cost is about $10 million of bonded debt. That's an annual principal and interest, and that's covering all the bonds that we have out there currently. As you're aware, we just had a very large bond. That's not included in here. That's the middle school bond. But the high school bonds are winding down. The middle school bond will pretty much sort of fill in its slot. So, that number will probably still be around 8 to 10 million dollars the next few years. And then, there's another funding that's used. It's called special revenue funds. These are like, these are different than most of the other funds. Most of the other funds, whether it be a grant or an operating budget, you get to use it during a certain amount of time. If you don't use it, then it goes away. Now, for a city, for an operating budget, it goes back to the city, and it can be used for other reasons, reduce the tax rate, whatever. For a grant, if you don't spend the money, then the state will take that money back and potentially reallocate it. Special revenue funds, it's sort of like a small business. So, you bring in revenue in the fund, you have expenses, but if you end up with, let's what you call a profit, then you get to keep that in the fund, and that money rolls over. Now, it'd be wonderful if these were huge amounts of money. They're not, as you can see. An example of one of those is sort of driver's ed. We have a driver's ed program for the high school students. The students pay a certain fee. We then take a lot of those revenues. We pay the instructors to teach the course, and then if there's money left over, we have it to buy cars and things like that. So, we'll go through those towards the very end of the budget process, but that's another funding mechanism that we have. And then, the last item is not a funding source, but it's basically, that's the revenue. We get about $41 million in revenue each year. Most of that is the school adequacy aid from the state, so it's basically what the state kicks into the school districts. That's been between 35 and 37 million. So, that's what that is. We also get some money for Medicare costs. We get money, there's a school building aid fund, we get a couple million dollars a year. They actually ended that, and now they're hopefully bringing it back. It would be nice if they did, especially for our middle school project. And then, there's a thing, special education aid, certain students, if they reach a certain level of spend, there's a percentage of that that's paid back to the district. So, that's sort of the revenue that offsets a lot of these costs. And I believe that is the end.
Does anybody have any comments, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, but I won't take over right from the beginning. But just on the, we were talking about the grants and how they don't line up. I'm curious if, we're hearing a lot about the census, and I'm curious if the census will affect our Title I grants or other monies that we receive from the federal government.
I don't know for sure, but I don't believe so. Title I is driven by free and reduced lunch numbers.
Right.
I don't think census is going to change that any.
Because some of the free and reduced lunch, the amount that is reimbursable comes from whether or not students meet a number of criteria, if they're immigrants and also in poverty, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know all the criteria. So, that's where I was kind of thinking.
The free and reduced lunch is simply a financial calculation based on what a family makes. It has nothing to do with those other.
Okay. Good. I have, I'll wait.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I know we don't have it in the budget book right now, but I know we have, we're going to be getting enrollment projections.
Yes.
Okay. And those enrollment projections, how far back are we going with it?
Well, for the, you'll receive two or three. You'll receive the October 1st enrollments for this year. That's sort of the date we use. You will receive a, sort of a roll forward of the elementary classes and classrooms. You can get a sense of numbers of students per class by grade for each of those. And we're working with the National Regional Planning Commission. They're doing the actual enrollment study for the future. Don't have that back yet. That typically would handle about 10 years, I believe. But I, don't quote me on that number, but it's a number of years.
So, that, so you're talking that they're going to go back 10 years on the?
When you say go back, they'll have data for maybe three or four years, and then they'll project forward, probably about eight to 10 years.
Okay. May I continue?
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to see, really, the enrollment, at least for the last five years, back.
Okay.
With the district. I can, you know, it's hard to project what's going forward, because although we're having a lot of building, it looks like a lot of building, we're having a lot of apartments, too. But there's a lot of homes that, there's a shortage of homes being sold. So, you know, usually, a lot of the 250 to 300,000-dollar homes are first-time home buyers, they come in with the kids, and if that's not on the market, then where are they going? Are they coming to Nashua? So, I'd like to get projections on that. The school construction grant from the state, are we still looking? Do we still get something like that when we construct the schools?
That's the school building aid. That was closed, that was shut down, not funded, about four, five years ago.
Okay.
There is a possibility that it could come back. We're actually meeting with the state person in the next couple of months. We're hoping that it will be funded, but at this point, there isn't.
Doesn't look too hopeful. Also, on First Student, is still the bus company?
Yes.
Okay. Why did it go up so high with First Student? I mean, back when, when gas was high, we built the gas into the contracts because of the cost of the gas rising so much. Why is the contract costing us so much? And did we look for another company around the area to put it out to bid?
I think we should, I'll be ready to answer those questions better on Tuesday.
Okay.
I have a question about the study that the Regional Planning Commission is doing. So, do you know what the timeline is, when they're going to complete this study?
I would hope it would be in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, that soon?
Yeah. We've signed, I signed a contract, gave them the information. I believe they have all the information from us they need. They get some of their own information as far as births and things like that. So, we're hoping, I believe they told me it would take about four to five weeks.
Okay. And that's going to be a public document? That, so basically, they're looking at previous enrollment, and then they're actually making a prediction in the future for 10 years, you said?
Yeah, eight years, 10 years.
Eight years? And that would be a public document, and they would have it on their website, you know?
I don't know if they put it on their website. It'll be, it'll be given as part of the budget process. It'll be on our website.
Okay, eventually, when it comes out.
Yes.
But that would be an interesting, interesting thing to look at. Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Raymond, you had more questions, right? Unless anyone else who hasn't gone? Nope? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. She, go ahead. Make. Are you sure?
You had more?
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, positive.
Okay.
We'll find some of them.
Oh, all right. Yes, I bring tabbies. Okay. You ready? I want to be ready. So, on page eight, the total labor, we're talking about salary increases. I just want to know if the projected increases, including some of the contract negotiations that are happening now.
Yes, it would include.
Hopefully?
Well, it would, yeah, it includes all the groups, yes.
Okay. All right.
But not teachers, because they have a contract for next year.
Right. But I'm thinking the parent negotiations is happening right now. We have a couple other ones coming up.
Yes.
Okay. And then, I'm curious if we know, okay, anything about how the Chromebook situation in the middle schools has impacted copier usage? Like, is it, did we see like a huge increase because we picked up Amplify Science, and, you know, we don't have enough Chromebooks for everybody to get on, so some things are being photocopied? Or am I kind of like jumping out, connecting dots that aren't there?
I don't know the answer to that. We could ask that. I don't know if Dr. [inaudible].
I can answer that, but I think it deserves a follow-up for clarity. What I, I was actually over at Penachuk today, and the feedback that I got was, in fact, a request for more Chromebooks, number one. I didn't tell Dan this, because it is a little bit of a hotspot for us, is like more copiers over at Penachuk as well. And that's part because of the new curriculum of Amplify. So, the question is, do we have more copiers, or do we supply more Chromebooks? I think what's really important is that the selection of the Chromebook is important. For example, the lifespan of the old Chromebook was about two to three years, which means that you can purchase more of them for less of a cost. But the downside to it is that it expires a lot earlier, or you spend a little bit more on the Chromebook, but the lifespan is longer. So, how do you find that happy medium? It is my understanding, to the best of my knowledge, and I'll have some follow-up when Greg Rodriguez comes to the board, we'll certainly ask him. It's my understanding that the current Chromebook situation, we have one more year on that license before it expires. So, I think it's important that we start to phase them out slowly, and we'll talk a little bit about some ideas we have on how to do that later on in the budget process, particularly around that one-time spending that would be coming our way for the second year in a row. So, that might be an opportunity to do that. But I'll have a follow-up on that to you.
All right. So, thank you. So, I'm just going to table my other question on Chromebooks until we get to that point. So, thank you for that. And then, my next question was regarding ELL and PERS. So, on page 12, the new cost nonlabor, and I don't know if it was a slip of a tongue or what, but you had said the ELL interpreter service, I thought you said was to increase the salary, but it didn't seem right at the time, so I assume I am wrong. So, is that for a phone service? What is that?
No. This, what this is, is the assumptions being made, they're doing investigation now, as you're probably aware. The Mr. Chopa, the ELL director, based on, they've done about half of it, let's say, after the first discussion. He feels strongly, one of the suggestions that they're going to make is that we have a service which will provide language support in multiple languages that we don't currently have. So, this would be a outside service. We'd pay approximately $30,000, and whether they do it Skype or via phone, whatever, that's how they.
Like the language line or something?
Yeah, exactly.
Where you call and you enter the, okay. The code of what, you know? Okay, great. That, I think that's a great idea, because then anybody at any school could access it even if their interpreter isn't available at that moment. Yay.
So, what we would do for this service, when we work for deaf and hard-of-hearing families, some of our families would go to this service, and they would sign, and then the person would be on the phone, like communicating with us back and forth.
Yep.
And currently, we should make some improvements on that. That's the best example that I can give you. We do have a strong inter, not strong, but certainly a lot more supports around Spanish and Portuguese, definitely not around Swahili and some of those other languages that are a little esoteric for us right now.
Yeah. When I worked at, for the state, we used the language line, and it was wonderful, because if you went to a family and they didn't speak English, if you could figure out what language they spoke, you could at least have a person on the phone to help interpret between the two of you. It's not ideal, but it's better than, you know, nothing. And I think in a meeting setting, it works. And I think in a meeting setting, it works great, you know? So, great.
Okay. Does anybody else who hasn't spoken? Do you have a hand, oh, I'm sorry. If we can go back to Ms. Johnson, did you have more questions?
Yes, thank you. I want to go back over this ELL interpreter service. Is, is this, could we get a federal grant for this? If the feds tell us that we have to have this, is there federal grants that we could get, right?
We don't have one currently. Could we get one? I don't know, but at this point, we do not have one.
Well, I think that would be important to look at because this $30,000, if we could get a grant, could be used for something else if need be. So I think that's important for grants. Do we have a good grant writer that just writes grants?
That's a loaded question.
We just hired a grant writer about two months ago. Her name is Pamela Davies. And we split her with the city. So she's with us, half with the city and half with us. So she's been working on some grants. Certainly at some point, I'd like to report back to the board the grants that she has attempted to work on with the city. The idea is there's a partnership there. Usually when you have grants, it's never solely about the school, it's about the community. So this is a real opportunity to kind of blend the city needs with our needs. We do have a grant writer. We're certainly looking at, again, going back to the strategic plan. Certainly, if there's an opportunity for ELL services to be covered, we'd certainly explore that. We just have to be careful about grants because one of the things that grants do, they give you a lot of money to begin with, but then, you said it, said it best, sustainability. Because then they phase it out and then it becomes part of your, your budget. See, we just, sometimes free money means a lot of money on the, on the backend.
Oh, I get that. There's strings attached to everything, but if this is going to be something that we're going to need long-term in the ELL interpreter service, then that's something that eventually is going to have to go in the budget. But if we don't have to put it in at this time, you know, because we are, you know, the talking tax is going up 3% to 5%. That's not how you keep people in the community, is how you send them out of the community. Director of ELL, $90,000, is that the starting salary or is that the entry salary?
That is an estimate of what the starting salary would be.
Starting salary. Well, they better have a pretty good resume for starting salary because my feeling always is, I don't care what it says on paper. I want to see how they're going to perform. And it usually takes anywhere from three to six months for somebody to perform the way you really want them to. So to me, paper looks good, it's performance that I look at. So I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I had, I had a question, kind of piggybacking off sharing a grant writer with the city. Is that a way of expanding if we wanted to do more interpreter services? Is pairing with other city agencies that also need interpreter services?
That's a, that's a very good point. We never really thought of it that way. Certainly, that's an opportunity to do so. Just for our, we, we share a large population of ELO students with, just be honest with you. Again, I don't speak for other districts, but other surrounding districts don't have as many ELL kids. So our person that we would be likely to share that service would be with either Manchester or, you know, Nashville because I could just, those are the largest communities. But certainly, that's something we can look into. I don't, I, we haven't really reached out, but be happy to do so and just to kind of kick the tires around that, sure.
And I also mean not just with other cities, but within our own city. So like, let's say, City Hall needs some more interpreters or the police department needs more interpreters. Is it more, could it be a citywide budget item where we have additional resources? I know at the, at the hospital, we currently have a lot of interpreters. We have a lot of need. We use the language line a lot. I think that's a huge budget increase over the last couple of years. And that's also a nonprofit, but if there was some sort of organization that provided this and we could kind of tap it out, I mean, that's a big picture thing, not necessarily a budget today, but spreading the cost when everyone has the same need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? I want to thank Dr. Mosley, oh, I'm sorry, we have Dottie.
Thank you. I have a question. When we get the projected enrollments, I think you said it was the Southeastern Planning or Regional?
That, National Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have to pay for that?
Yes.
I think it was.
They should, we're a member of, of the Regional Planning Commission, so they should give us sliding scale, but they do make us pay for services.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, we used to use NezDak to do it. This, the Regional Planning Commission, which pretty much gives you the same document back, is less than half of what we used to pay them. The last couple of times I've done this, I've used them as opposed to NezDak, which we, we used to do NezDak every single year.
I remember those days.
Yeah, and then I'm saying, well, why do we need this every single year? So then we started doing it every couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just interject here a little bit about enrollment, just to give it a context. The argument can be made, your budget is going up, but the enrollment is going down. We hear that, we, we understand that, but understand that, that the needs of our kids are exceeding what they were 20 and 30 years ago. We can't exclude kids that, that 20 years ago that were excluded. Laws and, and graduation requirements now require us to keep those kids not only in school, but also to educate those kids. We also have to make sure that with the opioid addiction and, and trauma for our kids, that now we have to provide services that we didn't usually have to do, but now we need to consider those services. And we don't, for some of our kids who are new to our community, who have no history with us whatsoever, we actually don't know and it takes a while to kind of figure all that out and get them the right services. So that's why we put those to school psychologists and that's why in our strategic plan, we have the counselors. Because that level of need intervention in counseling is all necessary. And, you know, Dan and I, we go back and forth about what to, what to present and what to share with the public. But the reality is the schools that we went to 20 years ago, 30 years ago, whatever, are not the same. And so this is a response to the surveys, the, the communication we received from our, our teachers and our administrators around the needs of our kids. And just be aware that sometimes that's not always in the numbers, but it's certainly a reality that we live every day. And certainly be happy to, to share some, some information around our kids in trauma, our kids who, who are in crisis, not to give any names. But certainly, what the idea of this, and as we start to talk, is that early intervention? We don't want to wait until they get into the high school to try to start something in intervention. We want to get to the kids when they're in the elementary school. Thank you.
I just want to, before, before I wait on you, I just want, before I call on you, I just want to, I just want to kind of piggyback on that to say that enrollment actually has gone up when it comes to a certain population, special ed population has gone up, the, the enrollment. ELL services, those students that need ELL services, that enrollment has gone up. And if, and the cost to educate someone in special ed is sometimes, and Mr. Donovan can tell me if I'm wrong, it's, I've looked at some of the numbers, it's two, three times more than, than a regular student. So that, enrollment has gone down slightly. And, and the other thing about Nashua, you have to remember this, that New Hampshire's population is expected to increase due to net migration. And I was reading this from the Karsee School at UNH. So that means our population is going to increase due to net migration. And Nashua is one of those areas, the migration to New Hampshire happens differently in Nashua than it does to the surrounding cities. It actually happens faster in, in Nashua than it does. So we might be seeing, you know, the, the school age population dipping slightly, but migration increases, Nashua is going to be one of the first places to, to experience an increase in net migration of people moving to New Hampshire. So Ms. Raymond, you were, you were next.
Oh, thank you. I just, I, I agree with, with everything y'all have said about the cost of education going up. And, you know, just remember, 25 years ago, when I was in school, the internet didn't exist. So, you know, those costs didn't exist either. We had paper and pencils and, you know, maybe a graphing calculator and a library card. But now we have to provide computers and internet access and all of the, you know, technology that goes with it and that's very expensive, plus all the paper and pencils and everything that we used before. So I think people fail to consider those costs when we talk about the cost of education rising over the last 20 or 30 years. I just had two more questions, if you don't mind entertaining them. The first one was regarding additional resources in your proposed budget. One of them was one elementary school assistant principal. Will that bring us up to one in each school? Yes, okay, yay.
Yes, so right now, we, there's a shared assistant principal between New Cerrills and Broad Street. And so, you know, that assistant will decide where he, he wants to go and then we'll post for that one and then it'll bring us up.
That will, that will be a huge difference for both New Cerrills and Broad Street. And I know that, that assistant principal does a wonderful job, but it's a Herculean effort. It's way more than one person.
And it's tough, you're right, because that half is time and someone's always going to be alone.
And Broad Street has the Intensive Needs Program, which requires an extra level of supervision. So I'm really pleased to see that in there, so thank you for that. And then my last question was regarding substitute pay. I don't see anything in here about substitute pay. And I feel like part of, part of the struggle with PERS is sometimes they're asked to kind of step into that role when we don't have teachers available. And I would just, would have loved to see something in here about attracting more substitute teachers. Because, right, is it just that, like?
It was discussed, it was one of the items. What, what you see tonight is all the items that we sort of coded as a one. We have a couple million dollars more of items that are two or three. Some of those item, two items, we may be able to purchase with the one-time state funds, so that, that'll come up later. But we just, you know, you can't, you can't have a 5% budget increase, 6% in a year. So that, we did discuss that. I think the problem is not, and a little extra pay, the problem is finding them. It's, it's, so we're looking at a couple of other options. But really not anything to.
All right, well, I'll look forward to hearing a little bit more about that when you guys are ready to present that. And then I guess my last thing is I appreciated you send, you including the mayor's letter in here where he's asked us to stick to 2.25, which is difficult. I'm curious to know, because math is not my strongest suit, if 2.25 would allow us to maintain our current level of service at, based on increasing costs? Because you had said in, in here that it's about 410 and how much wiggle room is left there? Just in raw, like rough numbers?
Probably about $300,000 of the new, but actually, no, it's probably a little more than that. To us, for us right now to go from 2.81 down to 2.25, I think it's about $650,000 you'd need to reduce.
Wow, okay.
We, really what kind of threw us for a loop honestly is this bus contract. And that's about $400,000 right there. So if you think about without the bus contract-ish, there's about, that's a $200,000 difference. And there's not, well, I don't want to talk too much publicly about the bus contract, but it's certainly something that, that has hindered us this year.
Ms. Gilgo?
I just want to support what, what Ms. Raymond just said. I've visited, I think now, 14 of our schools. And so I've had an opportunity to talk with the principals at each school. And, and when I ask about what are some of the most pressing problems? The fact that they cannot get good substitute teachers and have to pull the paraprofessionals and put them in charge of classrooms is, it's come up at every single school. There's not one place I went where they said, oh no, we're all set, we have plenty of subs, so.
You're absolutely right and it came up today, you're right.
Ms. Bishop?
Sorry, I have a quick question back to the bus thing and I don't know if you guys can speak about this, but with the increase in the bus cost, are they guaranteeing enough bus drivers and buses to get the kids to school without?
We'll speak more on Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay?
Everyone come on Tuesday.
I actually had one more question, sorry. With the, and this may be more of a city issue and a mayor issue, but if we're accepting more of a refugee status family unit, are they looking at increasing the line items required to meet those children's needs? Because we're going to have more languages to accommodate for and also depending on where they're coming from, because of their refugee status, we may have some more trauma and crisis things to manage.
I have found the mayor to be very, very receptive and open to healthy conversations about making considerations for our budget. This is the first round and we as a collective group plan to have those healthy discussions with him in the Alderland. But I agree with you. And I think, though, to be honest with you, there's new construction going on in the city. We got a, just an overview from, from last year too. It was at 2.43 with $200,000 in contingency. And so to get it, you know, and then they're phasing in those construction projects, so there's more kids coming to our schools. And we have to really think about that. And I'm talking specifically about Dr. Chris and what that feels and looks like for our kids. And, you know, that is a, a school that doesn't have a lot of space. There's hardly any parking and yet there's new construction right down the street. And so I don't necessarily know what that feels and looks like, but sometimes when you have new construction, what is projected and what's actually going on are sometimes two very different things. And the other piece to this, and, you know, I can, I, we all live in, I live in, we all live in Nashua, excuse me. But we, we know that the age, the popul, it's starting to turn over. And so a lot of these neighborhoods that people are retiring and are either transitioning to other areas and that we're going to get a new generation of, of kids coming in. These are different, these are different times, as, as Ms. Raymond pointed out. We got the internet. We've got the expectation that kids have access to updated Chromebooks. Not only access to updated Chromebooks, but also the technology and the software that goes with that Chromebook, Amplify. You know, even our teachers, the expectation that they're online and that they have access to X2 and Aspen. So all of these things are factoring in. And finally, when we talk about, you know, 2020, the year of the vision, is that when we make purchases, purchases in technology today, it's automatically out of date next year. And so we're forever in that cycle of updating and renovating and innovating our schools.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or, or comments? I, I just want to thank Dr. Mosley and Mr. Donovan for their hard work on this presentation and for answering all of our questions. Our next meeting is Thursday, February 13th at 6:30 PM right here. We're going to be discussing, we're going to be here, right? Yep. We're going to be discussing transportation, plant operations and our CTE program. So, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, and if, if you want, at the beginning of the meeting, if you want to spend what you have in your book so far, there's two large reports towards the end, those are the actual budget documents. One of them is a budget document, it's by school. The other one is the staffing by school, okay? So take a look at it. I'll be more than happy to run through, if you have any questions, on how it works. You just got to spend a few minutes looking, looking through the paperwork. That's all the detail, maybe more detail than some people would like to see, but that's all the detail. And, and as we go forward, any of these questions, like we've got tonight enrollment, they'd like to see five years back and things, just ask for those things, we'll put them in the queue and we'll, we'll, we'll get them to you, assuming they're, they're gettable, so to speak.
Thank you. If there is no other business? If there is no other business tonight, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned at 7:45.